We have our two commission chairman candidates who are set to debate here this evening. We have Wesley Weaver, who of course is the challenger, and the incumbent is Rob Jones. And we want to thank both gentlemen for being with us here tonight. I want to explain the rules a little bit to our gentlemen and also to you guys at home. We're going to allow three minutes per candidate on each question, plus a one-minute rebuttal for each side if needed. If you don't feel like you need a rebuttal, then you don't have to take that option. But we will allow time for a rebuttal. I will be asking each question. Dan Poole from the Pickens Progress has joined us. He's going to be the rebuttal guy here that will jump in where needed as a journalist and maybe ask some follow-up questions. And of course, Ron Barnes is also our timekeeper, and he is the one that's wearing the rec jersey here tonight. He's the one officiating. So without further ado, we will go ahead and get started. I do want to remind the audience that the questions that we will be asking here tonight were previously submitted from the community. And these questions, through the Chamber of Commerce, were felt like general public concern. And so that's where we have what we have here tonight. Both candidates were given a list of these questions so that they could come prepared tonight, and we could hear what they have to say. So with that, we will go ahead and jump right in. Is our timekeeper ready? Everyone's ready. Okay. First question. "In the previous forum at the Tea Party, the challenger made several statements questioning the courthouse project. Would both candidates discuss the project, as well as why voters should be pleased with it, or conversely, problems and deficiencies with the plans?" We'll start with Mr. Jones first.
If I may, Dave. Dave made a statement that I'm the incumbent. I will not be the incumbent. I am -- this is a new position post for Pickens County. It's a new form of government. I would be the incumbent if it was going into a sole commissioner form of government, but we were going to a multi-person board. So that does change. So if I may.
My bad, I'm a sports guy.
Well, back in '08, back in '08, we voted on the SPOLOST for the courthouse. That SPOLOST, phase one of that SPOLOST, was 17.1 million for the courthouse. At the best plans we had at that time, that's what we worked towards to try to make that go after it was passed. But as you know, there was two other plans that was involved in that process. We had two to three open meetings previous to that to see what the community actually wanted. They said with the courthouse downtown to have it remodeled. After the bid to the courthouse came in this last few months, that's a courthouse, the courthouse itself come in at 9.8 million. Now, that's the construction and the remodeling of the old courthouse and construction of the new one. Now, we still got the roads and the infrastructure around the courthouse. We've got the pavement. We're going to redo the sidewalks on both sides of the roads there going down Depot Street and up on the other side of the courthouse. We're having to redo the infrastructure on the backside. That's also putting in a railroad crossing at the tracks and a parking area behind the pig that will hold about 130 to 150 automobiles, not only for jury parking, but for downtown, for the city of Jasper, to get some more parking for the city. It's looking like that when the project is totally done, we run some new numbers here the other day, it looks like that project is going to probably come in somewhere between 12 and 14 million dollars. Now, I said earlier, we had 17.1 that was voted on the SPOLOST. So that project is approximately running $3 million under budget as we speak for tweaking in that project. Now, what everybody's got to remember, that courthouse has got four courtrooms in it. It's going to house all judicial system. And we've had, you know, people say, "Well, you know, the individuals that have to use that, those that are sitting in in front of the judges, don't need that nice of building." That's up to everybody's individual decision there. But we have to have a showplace for Pickens County for downtown Jasper. It's also a building that houses everybody that sits in this office here or in this building. It houses your personal records, your land deeds, any other legal legislation you've got. So those are the purposes of the courthouse. The deficiencies of the one we had, granted, no elevators. We had an old problem in that old courthouse. We were to the point that we were having to go out and borrow different areas to try to just have enough courthouse space. And then we were overbooked down at the courthouse annex behind. So at that point, I'm just going to let -- was that three minutes?
You got 10 more seconds.
10 more seconds. But that was the purpose of the courthouse, and what is voted on by the citizens of Pickens County. Thank you.
I'm an attorney in Pickens County, and I, you know, frequently go to the courthouse. And I remember the annex not too long ago, about five years ago. The annex had a large courtroom, and it was cut in half in a $90,000 innovation project. The annex been in the basement. It was a very large courtroom, cut in half. Now, there's a, you know, it's a small courtroom with one bleacher for people to sit on. They have to stand down the hall. Before that was cut in half, you know, there's plenty of room for court downstairs. Now, we're spending $17 million on a new courthouse. The sidebar restaurant and the old post office was traded for the new hospital, for the old hospital to make the new administrative building. $17 million to remodel an old building. And that's wasteful. Could have took the sidebar restaurant and turned it into courtrooms. And first, it was the sidebar, then the Rocky Mountain, the Sharp Mountain Grill, then it was the crust restaurant. Take, you know, if you've ever been in that restaurant, big, nice, stained glass windows, could have simply turned those into courtrooms. But now, you know, they're building a parking lot behind the Piggly Wiggly. Going to build the courthouse, tear the annex down, only 20 years old, build the new courthouse all the way out to the railroad tracks. No parking. Going to have to park behind the Piggly Wiggly and walk up there. It's going to be a long walk, especially when it's raining. There, you know, Spur said if we're going to have a covered walking path over a five-foot span of railroad tracks, good thing they decided against that, how much that would have cost. But, you know, that was the original plan. Now, you know, it's just going to be a crosswalk. Cars are going to be going to have to go over the railroad track, the same place people are. $50,000 for that concrete crossing, $200,000, you know, to pay for, you know, railroad crossing arms to come down. People walking up, you know, potential to get hit by a car, not a good idea. Should have built a courthouse, you know, if you needed a new one. Build it over by the jail, you know, save money on fuel transportation costs. Or, you know, the lot behind Ingles, used to be a driving range. Could have made a great place for the courthouse. Could have seen it from the highway. Anybody going down the interstate would say, "What's that building? Well, that's Pickens County courthouse." You know, it would have been a good symbol of Pickens County and attract people here.
Mr. Jones, rebuttal?
Well, the rebuttal, only rebuttal I've got is the SPOLOST that was voted on by the taxpayers of Pickens County. After the three plans, that was a plan they wanted, but the majority was to keep the courthouse in the middle of town and try to keep downtown vibrant and vibrant and keep businesses alive in downtown Jasper because we're seeing so many other communities die around the area by pulling the courthouse out of the middle of town. That was a vote that was voted on by the citizens of Pickens County. And they give me my when it was voted to approve. That was my marching orders to make it happen.
Mr. Weaver, do you have anything to add?
Somebody wrote the ballot, you know, somebody was responsible for running $17 million to remodel the existing courthouse. More studies should have been done on that. Somewhere where the, and the courthouse hadn't, you know, moving the courthouse wouldn't, you know, make the business on Main Street dry up. Main Street's, you know, the economy is a big reason for Main Street's problems.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Next question pertaining to the courthouse. Once the courthouse is complete, do you see any other government building or property needs in the next decade? And we'll start with Mr. Weaver.
In the next decade, we need to make better use of our water, pave our roads. Instead of spending, you know, money on $17 million courthouses, pave the roads, build the infrastructure, make it a place that, you know, business would want to come here. The next 10 years, we, you know, we're so far in debt. Mr. Jones claims it's 2.6 million, but the handout I gave him, giving to him, shows it's, you know, 18, 18,174,000 and change. That's from 2010 audit. Who knows what it was in 2011? We don't have the information. Mr. Jones hadn't provided the information early enough for the 2011 audit. So we don't know how far the county's in debt now. We need to focus on infrastructure, building roads, using the water we have to attract business to come here for new jobs.
Where do you want me to go from that? The, yes, in the next 10 years, we need to do some more infrastructure. The library needs to be enlarged to support the needs of its citizens. That is an entity that gets used very, very much by the citizens of Pickens County. Also, of course, wire, water, I'm sorry, and fire protection. As you know, the last three years, we've been trying to build a full-time fire department for Pickens County. The reason for that, there's two reasons. One of them is originally we want a full-time fire department for Pickens County. Number one, we were losing volunteer firefighters. But on the other hand, when you have a full-time fire station, what we're trying to do is work as a community to lower your ISO ratings. If you often save $1,000 or $2,000, I loan on some homes to lower your insurance ratings, it kind of lessens the sting if your taxes have to go up in the future. But that's what we're trying to do. And City of Atlanta, 1988, they finally went to a full-time fire department in City of Atlanta. It took them 100 years to build a full-time paid fire staff in the City of Atlanta. We're ahead of the curve on that one, but we've got 15 paid firefighters and working for the future for that in the next 10 years. It's going to be one of them. And of course, roads is an issue. And as we go into another question, I'll discuss the roads further.
Mr. Weaver, do you care to rebuttal?
I also have notebooks in the back. Mr. Jones talks about these projects and, you know, new projects he wants to do, like a spanned library. We're going to be in debt for several years to come. The total debt as of 2004 was 8,900,000. In the six years to 2010, that's the only audit we have, in six years, the total debt increased $10 million. $10 million over six years. There was 20 million left over from the previous 2003 SPOLOST. 20 million's gone. I don't know where it went.
Care to respond?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to the next question. All right. "Pickens County's park system would be ranked last among all surrounding counties. And this is low, lowly ranking as even with the new community center. From the miles of walking trails to the number of softball fields, Pickens is dead last in recreation. Is improving this a priority that we can afford?" Start with Mr. Jones.
The, don't know where you've got those numbers at, but previous to my, me being in office in the last eight years, what have we done down at the Recreation Department to improve what we've got without breaking the budget? We've got walking trails on 800 acres on Burton Mountain that was put in voluntarily by the mountain stewards. That's recreation. We have now, we've got a new community center that we all talked about. We've got more soccer fields. We have increased the parking at the Recreation Center. We'd like to increase more. It is a priority. And I'll tell you why recreation is a priority for Pickens County. Everybody here is wanting economic growth. Only way you're going to achieve economic growth is to stabilize your taxes and furnish recreation. Some of your major companies that want to come in here, even though they might be small companies, there's two things actually look at when they come into a community. And I know it kind of sounds far-fetched. The cemeteries is one thing that they look at, and then your recreation is another. The way a community keeps up the cemeteries of a county is really impresses people when they come into the area. So those are two items that we have to focus on. But that's what you have to really be with for the recreation of the area. So those are items that we are going to still feel is top priority.
Mr. Weaver?
As far as the Recreation Center go, the new community center, Mr. Jones borrowed $6.5 million to pay for it and the courthouse to it. That's a $6.5 million bond. Borrowed that unnecessarily. The school board, when they were going to charge Mr. Jones $25,000 to have rec ball a couple of years ago, instead of, you know, trying to negotiate with the school board, all the school board wanted was an actual community center that had to eat something other than basketball courts, like an aquatic center. The high school team, swim team, they need a place to have their swim meets. And instead of, you know, working with the school board and doing a community center with a pool, it pays the $25,000, and then turns around and spends $1.8 million for two basketball courts. That's $900,000 per court. That's excessive. And because of this, you know, short-sightedness and poor management of the budget, sad to say, it's unfortunate, probably not going to have any money in the budget for any new community centers.
Mr. Weaver, on that, would you elaborate a little bit more on your thoughts on the importance of recreation? Do you favor, not on Mr. Jones' side, but what do you feel we should do going forward with recreation?
If it was possible, you know, within the budget, if we had money to do it, what would be a good idea is what Mr. Barnes said previously. You know, everything's centered in Jasper. I live on the east side of the county, and, you know, there's nothing for kids to do, nothing for adults to do. You know, you can go walk down the road for exercise, but some people don't have the means to get to the center of Jasper to use the center. There needs to be centers on each end of the county.
Mr. Jones, do you care to rebuttal?
Quickly, the, we can't compete with our neighboring counties. The reason why we can't compete with our neighboring counties in recreation, we don't have Corps of Engineers lakes such as Carter's Lake, Lanier, and Altona. So they encompass that in their recreation areas. That's why the recreation numbers are a little more higher than Pickens. On the other hand, the way Cherokee, Gordon, and other counties have expanded their recreation areas, if y'all go do the history on the lot behind them, is the properties were dominated by families in those areas. The county did not have to go out and buy, and then the community got together and built a lot of those recreation parks, and then the counties did take them over. Now, of course, we would love to expand the recreation in Pickens County. There's no doubt about that. Walking trails, whatever that we need to do. The, if somebody here owns a swimming pool, I'm sure it's probably one of the cheapest entities in your house to try to maintain a swimming pool from one month to the next. And I'm being a little facetious on that because I've got one myself that I'd like to make a tomato patch out of. But they are a money pit. But we do the best we can to be able to balance the budget to keep from running that thing in the hole. The, and, you know, I'm all up for options, and we need to come up with some plans. We do have a 20-year plan for Pickens County, contrary to popular belief, recreation is one of them.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the next question. "Pickens County has been hit particularly hard by the recession as our local economy relied so heavily on real estate. What role does county government have, if any, in attracting jobs and new industry?" Start with Mr. Jones on that.
Not only has real estate been hit hard in Pickens County, but the construction industry, as most of you knew, as most of y'all know here, especially some of you bankers, of what we've been dealing with for the last two and a half years. Pickens County, as of two and a half years ago, we had formed in alliance with the City of Jasper to re-energize a joint community economic development council here in Pickens County and for the City of Jasper. Jerry Nectival was hired in that position to help bring the county forward. While he was there, he has implemented some facts with George Power, put a lot of our commercial buildings on websites where they're noticed, not only statewide, but outside of Pickens County. That office is paid for by Pickens County and the City of Jasper and his office here. That has been an asset to try to bring companies in here, and he has brought a few companies in, and we've got one or two more looking at Pickens County. The commercial end of it is we're looking at, on the commercial end, looking at the enterprise and opportunity zones. We already got one of those set up down in Tate, Georgia, to give the employer that wants to set up a new business state, state, take tax abatement for his employees up to two, I think it was $2,500 a year to bring in new employees, get new businesses in there. For instance, Patrazo down in Tate, we've got a new business coming in on north end of town here in Pickens County, and there's two or three more coming on board. The things are starting to slow, but things are starting to pick up.
Okay. Mr. Weaver?
The current county administration shouldn't take credit for any economic development that's happened in Pickens County because specifically, all the economic, you know, commercial influx has taken place down Interstate 515. And the, you know, the government response for that is not the county government, it's the city government. What the county needs to do is create an atmosphere where industry and small businesses want to locate here. We don't need to be, you know, anti-growth, and that's what we are now. We can't be anti-job growth. We don't have to be pro-growth. We just need to be prepared for what, you know, hopefully could come here in the form of a new industry. New industry wants to locate in a place where there's, you know, adequate roads, good paved roads, and a good, adequate source of water. We're not taking advantage of, you know, even the water lines we could be laying because we're planning for $17 million courthouse. So we're not going to be able, you know, lay water lines to do that. Tax breaks are a good idea. Tax breaks here, you know, in direct proportion with how many jobs they'll promise to bring here. Industry that wants to bring more jobs here, they should get a larger tax break for a longer period of years. You know, $2,500, you know, just to come here, that's not, you know, attractive for them. Look to actually contacting businesses to visit Pickens County, to come here and see what Pickens County has to offer. You know, putting pictures of what's going on on the highways is a good start. But we need to actually seek these people out and show them what Pickens County has to offer.
Mr. Jones, do you care to rebuttal?
With the same group I talked about, with the joint development, joint development of Pickens and City of Jasper, we are looking at a proposed tax abatement plan for bringing those companies in and giving them some property abatements for either five to 10 years. But we want to come up with a utilized plan that can be uniform across the board, not just piecemeal one company or the next, and not put a detriment to the taxpayers of Pickens County. Last thing we want is a company to come in, get a five-year tax abatement, and in five years, they go on to another county. We've got to make them stay, and we've got to make it worth their while to come here. And then also, we've got to make an agreement with them that's more substantial than what we've had in the past.
Mr. Weaver, do you have a response?
$2,500 isn't as much as enough. You've got to have a business, you know, to come here. If they come and build a building here, you know, they're not going to leave in five years.
Okay. All right, moving on. "Water supply, water lines are cited as a primary infrastructure need. Why do we need this additional resource at this time, and what plans do you have to address it? And also, why is sewage infrastructure not as needed?" We'll start with Mr. Weaver on this one.
Infrastructure's the most important because the infrastructure will, you know, attract outside growth, I mean, outside investment and job growth. Adequate water and a good road, I mean, that's what's needed, not, you know, $17 million courthouses. You know, the same 250 people shoulder the court, you know, every month. It's, don't need to build a, you know, a big multimillion-dollar complex all the way out to a set of railroad tracks five foot wide, have people, you know, walk that far to the courthouse. That's not parking for Main Street. I guess it's parking for what was formerly the Harhage, now, you know, what the county bought to be the Board of Elections building.
Mr. Jones?
The, we've come a long way with the, with the water and the construction of water lines in the county's water service delivery area. As most of you know, House Bill 49 looped us. What happened on House Bill 49, Pickens County's property is on the east side of the county and on the west side of the county, and then the City of Jasper's House Bill 49 Water Service Delivery Area is one-third of the center of Pickens County. What goes on there is the fact that we transfer water across, and we're partnering with the city on that, on those lines, and we buy water back and forth from the city and the county. Along with those water lines that we have built to all four corners of the county, such as Dawson County, Cherokee County, Gordon County, and also Gimmer County. And my predecessor before me set up the arrangement to get with Gordon County, built the lines on that end. I'm not going to take full credit for that. He did a good job getting that, getting that rock forward to that point. We have worked hard by state, state plans to bring this water to all four corners of the county where we can share water or buy water or sell water to our neighbors. Henceforth, up there on Steve Tane Highway, we've run water up there, and we furnish water to Dawson County Fire Department up there, right across from North Gate at Bent Tree. So there's things that we're doing. The, as for, as for sewage, with the sewage infrastructure, when you look at the mountain scapography of Pickens County, it is not just a quick, easy fix. You have to deal with pumping stations. I know the City of Jasper has to deal with a lot of pumping stations. When we go outside the county, it gets, it gets a little more harder to accomplish that, and it takes a lot of money to do that, to build that infrastructure for sewage. There is other, other plans that can be used. They have got package, package systems now that you can use that. But the biggest thing what we're trying to do is partner with entities such as, such as maybe Big Canoe, maybe use part of their sewage for the foothills area. We already got an agreement with Big Canoe to be to buy water or sell water into Big Canoe for emergency situations, or if they want to sell water. We're trying to work out, hopefully in the future, we can work out and deal with Bent Tree. Henceforth, they already got reservoirs. We know it takes 15 years, a minimum of 15 years to build a reservoir in the county. EPD guidelines, DNR, your individuals, when you got all these critters floating around in the streams that you have to do environmental studies on cost of county or a city, multi-millions of dollars. Henceforth, you're seeing what's going on down in Cherokee County with the one they've got down for the City of Jasper, I mean, the City of Canton, along with Cobb County. But that's what we're doing, and we're setting plans apart. As most of you know, I sit, I'm the chairman of the Cusawatie Water and Sewer Authority now. That was an authority that was formed here three years ago, and with Gimmer County Water and Sewer, City of Calhoun Water and Sewer, and Murray County Water and Sewer. So those type of things that we're planning for the future for the next 20 years is what we're trying to get accomplished in Pickens County.
Mr. Weaver, do you have a rebuttal?
Apart from being the president of the Cusawatie, you know, Water Club, Mr. Jones hadn't done anything. He's trying to take credit, like he said, I'm surprised he said it, for the previous administration running, running water from the west side of the county all the way to the east side of the county. He can't take credit for that. The fact is, we're not adequately using the water we have now. And with the debt the way it is, you know, a reservoir is not, not possible. We've spent too much money. Money's going to things like inflated budget for the Commissioner's Office. I want to know why Mr. Jones' salary is $105,731 when, you know, you're supposed to make $1,200 more than the highest-paid county official who makes $69,000. He's making $35,000 too much.
Mr. Jones, do you have a response?
Since that deal was water, I think my salary is liquidity, isn't it? No, no response to that. We're going to take care of that on into the program with the other questions.
Okay, next question. One more answer we'll do here, but we'll give you guys a minute to explain this next one. We asked it of our district candidates earlier. "Do you favor a senior school tax exemption for Pickens property owners? Yes or no?" And we'll start with, we'll start with Mr. Weaver on this one.
I would like to say yes, but unfortunately, you know, in the very near future, it's just not going to be possible because the county's $18 million in debt, not 2.6 million as the Commissioner claims. But, you know, seniors, you know, trying to prepare for retirement, it's not fair that they should be burdened by, you know, excessive property taxes. And, you know, had we saved money over the course of the last eight years, you know, something like a HOCS, a Home Set Option Sales Tax, would have been, you know, possible. But not with a, you know, $34 million SPOLOST, you know, that's, you know, recently been passed. Half of that, $17 million, going towards the courthouse. And what Mr. Jones wants to take care of is he's going to tell you that he's, with regard to his salary, that he's going to call it the Billy Walkford effect, that he was locked in at his salary when Billy Walkford retired. That's not what the law says. The law says you make $1,200 more than the highest-paid county official. When Mr. Donnie Craig was elected, the highest-paid county official became him at $69,000. Mr. Jones still, for the past, you know, four years, has made $35,000 too much.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
The yes or no answer to your home set. I think the group that was previous to us did a very good job bringing that out. At this time, I'm not in favor of a school tax exemption. It has nothing to do with county taxes. It has something to do with school taxes, and that's what we need to focus on. The, the school tax exemption, right now in Pickens County, as most of y'all heard earlier, is $25,000 or less for a family. That makes that, they get 100% school tax exemption status on that one. We would like to probably raise it to 30, 35 in the future and get that, get that done. At this time, I foresee a 100% school tax exemption with the senior citizens that we have moving in at 17%. At this time, it's not feasible. And another option you have to look at, when you start bringing in commercial growth, that's one of the things they look at, is their tax base. If they know that they've got to pay more tax, and the, and the citizens that have to work for them have to pay more tax, it kind of defers commercial growth coming in, coming into either a city or a county government.
Mr. Weaver, I'd like to follow up on the yes or no, full exemption. I know you said there's debt, we couldn't do it. If the debt was not there, would you be in favor of looking at it?
If the debt wasn't there, I would be in favor of looking at it. In fact, I've, you know, at the Saturday thing they had a big move, I said it's not fair that, you know, seniors have to bear that tax burden, but right now, you know, in the near future, it's not possible because we're so far in debt.
All right, let's move on. Okay, what are your thoughts on the T-Sploß? And we will start with Mr. Jones this time.
The T-Sploß, or the Transportation Sploß, is something the DOT is trying to pass. It's a one-cent sales tax for roads. Now, this item, we don't have enough time this evening to discuss it, and it is something that y'all need to be aware of. The Tea Party is going to have a seminar on this, I think, in about the next Tea Party, I believe, to give some insight on this one-cent sales tax for the T-Sploß or the Road Sploß money. Make a quick statement on that. I'm not in favor, by no means of the legislation that is written at this time, because what it's done to us, it's made Pickens County into a donor county. We've discussed sploß. I know this kind of went in different directions here, but we have discussed sploß. Normally, a five-year sploß in Pickens County brings in approximately thirty million dollars. A ten-year sploß, when you go to this thing here, is approximately sixty million dollars. If the projects were promised, projects that were promised to be done in Pickens County are done, and this thing passes, we're just going to get forty-six million dollars out of the deal. So, again, we are a donor county, our money that we're paying is going somewhere else. There was a proposal made, when this was discussed over a year and a half ago, that the county commissioners and the mayors would probably support a one-cent sales tax on this, if and only if that they would guarantee that the county would get back eighty-five percent of the money that citizens put into this project, that the DOT keep the fifteen percent. At that time, we were sat down and said the counties don't know how to spend their money correctly. So, that's what the issues we've got with that. You're taking control out of your tax money by sending it to the state and let them tell you how they're going to spend your money.
All right, Mr. Weaver?
Vote no on the T-Sploß. It's a one-percent sales tax for the next ten years. It's expected to generate nineteen billion dollars statewide. We're in a region of fourteen other counties. These include Dade, Cusaw, Whitfield, Murray, Fannin, Gilroy, Gordon, Walker, Shetugah, Floyd, Barto, Polk, Harrison, and Paulding. If every single person in Pickens County voted no to the T-Sploß, it could still pass, and we'd still be bound by it. If four of the, you know, the least populous counties, if they voted no by seventy percent, only the four largest counties would have to vote yes by sixty-one percent, it would still pass. We need to be, you know, Pickens County, if the tax dollars collected here, it should stay here. It shouldn't be sent to some regional roundtable who will decide, you know, where to spend the money. We know best how to spend the money in Pickens. Not only that, it arguably violates the Constitution. I compare it to Obamacare. If Obamacare passes and is allowed to stand, you're going to have to have a mandate, you know, to pay for insurance. Well, this is what this is. It's a mandate saying we're going to have to pay for another county's infrastructure. If we're going to get seventy-five percent cents on the dollar, you know, what's the benefit in that? You know, keep the whole dollar here in Pickens County.
Any additional comments?
He's right, but other than the fact that we've got fifteen counties in the Northwest Georgia RC region, the, and some of his numbers are correct. He is right to the fact that we can be overrode by Paulding County, Floyd County, Whitfield County. They have enough voters, if they want to pass this thing, it didn't matter how Pickens, Gilroy, and Fannin voted, we could wind up getting caught up in this thing without any control over it. That is true. The, I would, there is, the mayor of Dalton, for instance, has formed a committee to fight it around that area. Other counties in the Northwest Georgia RC are fighting it. Now, most of your counties closer to Atlanta, such as Paulding, which is a big county, might go for it. We just don't know exactly what's going to happen down in Paulding County. But we have to deal with Barto County, Paulding County, Whitfield County, and Floyd County, and as well as Gordon County, it's got seventy-five running up the middle of it. So, those monies can be diverted to those areas, even though they have promised us that we'd be able to hold them here. I don't believe that.
Any additional comments?
I just want to say, you see these commercials on TV, it's a ball of roads, and it says untie Atlanta. The theory is that, you know, this money spent down in the metro area will free up the roads, free up traffic, allowing, you know, people from Atlanta, more populous areas, to come to the north and south. I'm just not for it. We should, you know, we should spend our own tax money here.
Sounds like you guys are kind of on the same side of the issue there, right?
That's one.
There we go. That's, there we go. Okay. Well, don't worry, this next question will probably even back up. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Jones on this one. Discuss the current state of the county's finances.
Boy, you are going to fire it up, aren't you? We have on the website, we have put our audits, our budgets, you know, on the county website since oh-six. To give you a number of you, I'm just going to give you a quick one. Oh-six milliliterate, six-point-two-six. Oh-seven milliliterate, six-point-one-three-three. Oh-eight milliliterate, five-point-eight-nine-five. We were able to roll it back a little bit that year because of sales tax revenues. Oh-nine, oh-ten, and twenty-eleven milliliterate, six-point-two-six. We were able to keep the milliliterate the same, even though the last two and a half years, the overall property values have declined. What everybody has to remember, even with the nineteen million dollar budget for the county, less than half of that comes from your property taxes. The other half of that comes from sales tax revenues, ad valorem taxes for car tags, those type of entities. Granted, it still hits you in the pocket, but don't get me wrong. And I grant, I'm in full compliance to the fact that Mr. Dobbs has, or the assessors board, as well as some of their staff, has some issues of trying to equalize the value of property. That's not, I'm not going to debate that. I'm in all compliance with that. But by state law, I get to appoint the assessors board. After that, I can't have any undue influence on that board, and Roy Dobbs does not work for me, nor does any part of the assessors board, they work for the tax assessors. So, that's how that particular part is set up at Little County. But at six-point-two-six mills for a county, we're one of the lowest north of I-20. And contrary to what my opponent's going to say, long-term debt in Pickens County's two-point-six million. I can't pay an eighteen million dollar debt without raising the milliliterate in the last three years. It just can't happen. Numbers don't work. Sure, he's got papers. I can print you papers and write that, write that I'm Batman, if you want to believe that one. But the problem is, is to say that you've got an eighteen million dollar debt in Pickens County, that's why the county hires new auditors every three years to keep everything on the up and up. We don't have an eighteen million dollar debt in Pickens County.
As of two thousand and ten, there was an eighteen million dollar debt. He gave you a handout, a four-page handout, the second page, long-term debt, note number nine, halfway down the page, six million dollars in governmental activities, long-term liabilities. For water, business-type activity, long-term liabilities, over twelve million. Twelve million is six million, eighteen million. It's eighteen million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-two. Now, like Mr. Jones says, it may no longer be eighteen million. I don't know what it's increased to since last year. The problem is, the audit for the two thousand and eleven budget hadn't been done, because, you know, he's late about it. If you're looking at two thousand and ten budget, and it's in these notebooks back, if you're looking at two thousand and ten budget, the audit said it was late. It was, the information for the firm of Malden and Jenkins to do, the audit was late. This year, it's real late. He hadn't even, he just now has hired a new accounting firm, much less given the information. So, it's probably higher than eighteen million. Look on the second page. I didn't write these papers. This comes from the Georgia Department of Audit's website. You can go look at that online. This is page twenty-eight from the Department of Audit's website.
Mr. Jones, rebuttal?
The two thousand and ten audit was late. If all you remember, in two thousand and ten, the reason why the audit was late, we asked for a six-month extension granted by the state of Georgia. You know why they granted us a six-month extension on the two thousand and ten audit? Everybody remember the tornadoes? We about shut whole county government down, cleaned up a mess on another county that caused us to have to pull people out of the office, go out there and work on that project. It took nearly two and a half months to get that area cleaned up. That's when we got a six-month extension in two thousand and ten. The audit was done in two thousand and ten. Another thing everybody has to remember in Pickens County is our fiscal year runs from January first to December thirty-first. The fiscal year of a school system is from June, I'm sorry, from July to June. So, those two, these different, and a lot of people get it confused. My audit is not due till the end of this year for two thousand and eleven, but the audit's finished. We're just waiting to get a printout from the new audit company. And we do change audit firms every three years, just because we think it's a good idea to change them.
Any additional comments, Mr. Weaver?
The, I think the reason the audit companies were changed, it's the last page of my handout, page fifty-six. The audit company reported internal control over the financial reporting, a material weakness identified, significant deficiencies identified, non-compliance material to financial statements noted. All these boxes are checked. We're going to read on it.
Okay, we're going to move on to one of our final questions here. We're running out of time. The last question that was given to the candidates ahead of time was, what do you see as the chief transportation road needs in this county, and how would you address it? And we'll start with Mr. Weaver for this question.
In the last few weeks, I've never seen the road paving that's been going on. Over the course of the last eight years, where were all these roads being paved? Now, in the last month, all these roads are being paved. And I don't know where the county's getting the money to do it. January twentieth this year, the county took out a tax anticipated note, and that's a loan from a bank. They took it out in the amount of six million dollars, and they offered it, you know, for bids to the banks to see the lowest bid. The four banks that bid on it were Jasper Banking Company, United Community Bank, the Royal Bank of Canada, and Wells Fargo. The county picked Wells Fargo. You know, bank local, I don't know if there's a Wells Fargo in Pickens County. The closest one I know is in Canton. Even if Jasper Bank and United Community Bank had a slightly higher interest rate, you know, why not keep that money in the county? I think he's took this six million dollars, more debt, and he's using it to pave these roads right before the election. Six million dollars more on the county's credit card. This money's going to be paid back before the end of this year, December thirty-first. Used to, people had a, you know, up till February, the middle of February, to pay their taxes. That's why it's been changed to pay taxes within, you know, the fiscal year, because Mr. Jones is going to pay this six million dollars back from, you know, from Wells Fargo Bank. Why not Jasper Bank or United Community Bank?
You want to respond to that, or you want to read more?
It's your turn.
Six million dollars. County, Pickens County, in the past, has always used a tax anticipation note. That is nothing unusual. We try to do it within the county government, or in the county process of the boundaries. We put that bid out for all the banks in Pickens County. The reason why Wells Fargo, or Wells Fargo got the bid, is their interest rate coming sometimes quite lower, and we're looking out for the taxpayers of Pickens County. The school system in Pickens County does that, tax anticipation notes. So, that's that. I'm going to leave it at that for right now, because we don't got time. But I'd like to get to this. The upgrading, to your question, what do we see as chief transportation road needs in the county and how you address it? The upgrading of Highway fifty-three in the downtown Jasper needs to be the top list of priority of DOT projects. It has been long overdue for an upgrade. As for the county, we have four hundred and fifty miles of paved road and a hundred and five miles of dirt roads in Pickens County, not including the City of Jasper or state highways that are in the county. So, y'all do the math. We are, on the average, we're doing ten miles a year, is what we're doing. When I first took office, we were paving approximately three miles. We have now got that up from five to seven, now we're doing ten miles a year. When I took office in oh-five, we were averaging approximately four miles resurfacing a year, and now that number has reached to ten miles. We were receiving, we were receiving, before the economy collapsed, around five hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars from the DOT to have paved these roads. Last three years, they have cut us to zero. This year, we're getting three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for resurfacing. So, I'm saying that to say this, four hundred and fifty miles of paved road in Pickens County, we're doing ten miles a year. It would take you forty-five years to resurface every road in Pickens County. Your normal wear and tear on a good asphalt road is fifteen to twenty years, and you've still got to go back and hit places there. I'm taking the dirt roads out of the picture, I'm just talking about paved roads. It is a balancing act. Maybe, hopefully, depending on what we do in the next sploß, roads needs to be top priority for the citizens of Pickens County for the next sploß, to get us that money in there. But it's costing you approximately eighty to a hundred thousand dollars a mile to pave a road, and that's with the county owning its own equipment. Now, if you take and sub that out to a C W Matthew or something like that, you can two and a half times that price because of contract equipment and contract laborers you've got there. That's why we own our own equipment. That's why we really extend the miles for the least amount of money we can get from the state.
Mr. Weaver, rebuttal?
Paved roads, you know, almost characterized as unpaid. Paved roads, probably getting so bad, they could be characterized as unpaid roads. Now, why not focus on the hundred miles of unpaid roads? You know, with seventeen million dollars for a courthouse, you know, you could pave every unpaid mile of a road in the county twice and pave every mile of paved road, you know, fix it. Ten miles a year is just not adequate. There's a place out on the west side of the county, Harlan Road, Seneca View Road, you know, close near the Dairy Queen, between the Dairy Queen and High School. Terrible roads. More focused paid on the road, paid to the roads.
Mr. Jones, any additional comments on that?
Well, the road paving is an issue. I'm not disputing that quite a bit. We've got areas in the county that we're trying to accomplish on some new regulations to incorporate some more subdivision roads into the county, but these are things that we have to work towards for the next process and see what we're going to do, come up with the money to do that for. If the citizens want me to raise the taxes, we can pave all the roads in Pickens County if we want to, but those are an issue, and they will always be an issue. The reason why we have a hundred and seven miles of dirt road left, believe it or not, we have people that have bought property on those roads, that have horses, that do not want those roads paved. We have tried, we've got that number down, we've paved about twenty-five miles, but believe it, we've got people that don't want their roads paved for numerous reasons. One of them, they've got horses, they like to ride on dirt road. Number two, it cuts down traffic. They don't want to have people zipping up and down in front of their house all the time. That's the issue you have, and that's what you're looking at. We are never, probably unless, only people that want the road, dirt roads paved, is only people that want to use it for a cut through.
We're basically out of time, but we're going to give you guys each a minute here to say anything that maybe you didn't get a chance to say, and basically try to persuade the voters that are in attendance here today to vote for you. So, we'll start with Mr. Weaver, and you've got one minute.
We need to vote on July thirty-first to install a panel of commissioners who will restore the core values of Pickens County, advocating for an open, honest, accountable government that serves the public interest, not private interests, who encourages ordinary people to make their voices heard in the political process. We need to vote for a trio of commissioners who serve this county with an independent voice for the common good, not beholden to special interests and influence peddling, commissioners who keep a watchful eye against corruption and good old boy politics, against ethics violations and abuses of power, commissioners who respect grassroots efforts and keep open ears to new ideas and innovation from wherever and whomever those ideas may come from. Only the citizen can bring about change to the political system and bring the Pickens County government back to life. Make it responsive and accountable and keep it honest. No one but the individual citizen can, and I appreciate your vote for county commissioner chairman on July thirty-first. My name is Wesley Weaver.
Mr. Jones, one minute.
People of Pickens County have blessed me with the opportunity to be your commissioner for two terms. First time that has happened over twenty-two years in Pickens County. It has been a job that I have really enjoyed. It has been a job that you put in about twelve hours a day, Sunday, six days a week, and part-time on Sunday. That's part of the, what you have to do, to sacrifice yourself to the citizens of Pickens County. My office has always been open. I have never turned anybody away, and I have tried to return anybody's phone call that I've called that day. You might not have got the answer when we talked, but I have tried to respond to you as quick as possible, and hopefully within that twenty-four hour period.